Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Board's, uh, Select Board's meeting of Tuesday, March 4th. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Leahan. I am joined by my fellow board members Anita Mlekenberg and Mr. Kevin Roach. Are there any public comment this evening? Yes, sir. If you can come forward and give your name and address, uh, and we allow up to three minutes. You understand the board cannot respond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Bowman. I am an elected member to the Democratic State Committee representing Norfolk and the ten surrounding towns. I'm also Chair of the Norfolk Democratic Town Committee. And I am pleased to share with you that we're putting three candidates forward for the position of Register of Voters. They're all professionals who are deeply committed to fairness, collaborating with others, and the democratic process. Our town clerk deserves capable people positioned in role should she need to call on them. And each of these individuals are well-positioned to do just that. Should you not know, Christian, Paula, or Terry, I'd strongly encourage each of you to reach out to these individuals over the next couple of weeks. They are all very capable, intelligent, easy to work with, and committed to fairness. In closing, I'd like to say I appreciate your time. I appreciate your consideration. And most importantly, I appreciate your service to our town in Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate yours as well, sir. Are there any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll get right into the business at hand.
Right.
Justin.
Yes, the first item in the board's agenda is the consideration of appointment of Kyle, hopefully I've not mispronounced his last name, Lampy, to the Norfolk Cultural Council. The council voted unanimously to request that the board appoint him at their February 12th meeting. And the board's packet is his application and resume, um, if you'd like to have it. I don't know if Kyle's here.
Yes, I see him.
He's on Zoom.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to hear from him or, yeah.
Uh, any, have any questions?
No, I appreciate his willingness to serve and his support of the committee.
We, uh, we thank for all the volunteers we can get. Carl, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Any further questions? Do I have a, do I have a motion, Mr. Roach?
I make a motion. We accept Kyle as for the cultural committee, cultural council member.
Second.
Further discussion?
Wait.
All in favor?
Just note the expiration date is June 30th, just publicly, June 30th of 2028.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Carl, thanks very much. Appreciate your volunteering.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next item is consideration of annual appointment of the Inspector of Animals. Our current, um, uh, Inspector of Animals is Susan, Ms. Susan Thibodeau. This appointment runs a little different than our annual appointment process. So if the board remembers, this is a May appointment to April 30th of next year. So May 1st of this year to April 30th. We reached out to Susan and she wants to continue in that role. And I'm recommending that the board consider appointing her to that position again.
Mr. Roach, comments?
I have no questions.
No, I think she's done a nice job and we're happy to have her continue.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We accept, uh, what's his name again? Sue.
Susan Thibodeau.
Susan Thibodeau for the animal inspector's job of May 1st of this year till April 30th of next year.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Uh, sorry. The next item is number four. It's a consider approval of change of hours for Carvana.
It's a weekly event.
So they, they want to change their hours again. By the way, I just want the board to know, I have communicated with them and asked, like, can we sort of finalize on whatever the hours may be? They did indicate to me that this is their final request at the moment, so.
At the moment?
At the moment. They want to request their current hours being changed from Sunday to Saturday from 8:00 to 6:00 PM to Sunday to Saturday from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
I'm just curious, is there any, I mean, I think this is the third change. Is there any reason? I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm just curious how this could be so flexible or?
I, I called, I even called sort of their management chain to understand, you know, why it was going through so many changes. They said they had noticed in some of their other dealerships where they didn't change the hours, that business, there was an uptick, right? Initially, when they changed their hours, they said, we don't think we need to have that. We don't see that. And some of the other businesses where they didn't change the hours, they saw an uptick in the hours. So then they wanted to change it again.
Sounds like a field test.
Seems like it. I asked respectfully that Norfolk not be a part of that field test any further.
That would be nice, yeah. Can, can you share that maybe we need to hold this one way or the other, at least for more than two weeks?
I told them it would probably not be going before the board again. So take a couple of weeks to make sure they wanted to do this adjustment. It took a couple of weeks. They said they want to proceed. So here we are.
Questions?
No questions.
Okay.
I think if they want to reduce the hours, they're going to have to stay open these hours. Then we're not going to reduce the hours next time.
It would, you never know.
Yeah.
You never know. All right. Do we have a motion?
Kevin?
I make a motion. We extend the hours to Carvana's as hours from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, Sunday through Saturday.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item in the board's agenda is vote to approve a road event for the Norfolk Police and Fire 5K for Autism. It's going to be on April, bless you, April 5th, 2025. And the time is from 7:45 to 12:00 PM. I just want to know, even though it's a Norfolk Police and Fire event, there's a lot of different departments that are involved, recreation, DPW, Board of Health. So we're very proud to, you know, to stand, uh, in support of this, uh, event. There aren't any public safety concerns. And in the board's packets, a fairly detailed list of what's, what they're doing and so forth. So hope to approve this road event.
I can't imagine a safer race than run by the Norfolk Police and Fire. Just an opinion. Comments?
Kevin?
Yep.
I just appreciate their, uh, these kind of events bring us together as a community and really do make a difference. So I really appreciate that a lot. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just say that the cause for which you are running is deeply needed and a growing concern. And so thank you for doing it. Do I have a motion, Mr. Roach?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, we approve the event on, what's the date here?
April 5th.
April 5th from 10:00 to 2:00.
No.
Oh.
7:45 to 12:00 noon.
Okay, from 7:45 to 12:00 noon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much so. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
The next agenda item is, we received, the town received a notice of intent to sell land under Chapter 61B. So in this board's packet is what I received. I'm giving notice to the board. We receive this February 18th. I'm going to speak with town council, but my understanding is we have 120 days to respond to this notice of intent. The reason why I'm presenting it to the board right away is I noted in the pamphlet here, they're pretty explicitly saying this proposed buyer plans to construct a small 40B development. So as soon as I saw that, I looked at sort of what the purchase price was, and it's, I think, 285. So my intent was to reach out to the Affordable Housing Trust and CPC as well, just to see if there's any interest in this property rather than allowing it to be a 40B. We did speak to, um, the Affordable Housing Trust to let them know about this, um, potential property. I'm planning to forward this information to CPC as well, if people are interested in using its open space. But I think for the price that the, you know, the property is being sold, it's something definitely to consider, rather than just allowing it to be a 40B, so.
Include recreation in that list as well.
Will include recreation. The Board of Assessors already took a vote. I think the planning board is interested in probably notifying the board that they support.
They'll be taking up next Tuesday night.
So I just want to let you know, I, I've undergone that process. We'll really, uh, give this information to the relevant boards and commissions and then follow up with the Select Board regarding it.
And I, I don't see a date in here, the date of the purchase and sale? Am I missing it? Am I not seeing it? Because the clock, the clock starts from the date of the purchase and sale.
Yeah, the assignment of the contract for purchase and sale says December 12th.
December 12th, okay.
But we received it February 18th.
So when does the clock start?
It starts with the purchase, I believe.
I'm going to talk with town council about it tomorrow when we speak.
Got a question?
Oh, we, we have just received the information?
We received it February 18th.
I always thought the clock started with the date of the purchase or sale. And I thought they, I thought there was a clause in the agreement that they had to notify us within a certain period of time. So if you could.
I'll make sure we clarify and have that clear. I think it's upon receipt.
Logic would say it'd be 120 days from notification.
Yes.
I had a question. In the materials, it talked about an assignment fee of $100,000. But then later they said the $100,000 assignment fee would be changed to 52.5. And I just had questions about that, if that would be part of the purchase price? Or is that something that's a responsibility of the owner?
That probably would be. I will clarify with town council, but I did note that amendment in the back as well. So that probably would be incorporated into it as well.
That's my only question.
Yep. Kevin, do you have any questions?
Not this time.
Do you know anything more about the, what the proposed development is, just out of curiosity?
No. Just, just the investment company says it plans to construct a small 40B development or individual single-family lots.
And it's 13 acres, I think.
Do we know how much wetlands of this 13 acres?
We have no information. I literally just got it. I haven't spoken with Conservation, Plane Board, or anyone else. Sue's here, who has a map, who can speak to it.
Because I know in, in that general area of them two lots, there was quite a bit of wetlands.
I think after all of our relevant boards and our staff take a look at it, we'll definitely have the information.
Yeah, we have plenty of time. Um, I, I assume, I think it's from the date stamped that we receive it.
That's how we operate. I will make sure I just 100% get it, but that's what I believe it is.
I'm trying to remember that land we bought in back of Jane and Paul's. I can't remember the name of it. Isn't that terrible? But, um, they were going to develop it and there were some wetlands there. And I think we had 120 days from date stamped for.
The yellow is the property.
Yeah.
There's 13 acres.
Weber, Weber property. That's what it was.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, thank you, Sue. Sue just provided a map. We'll provide this information on fall in board meeting, and Rich is actually bringing it up as well.
Yeah, we don't have to beat it up tonight.
Yeah, we don't have to take a look at it, but we'll have this information for the board after. I just wanted to present it to you and just tell you, hey, I'm going to reach out to our boards and commissions. I think it's something we probably want to take a look at, particularly if, you know, if a board commission was interested, or CPC, for example, that might be something that we would want to put on this for this town meeting. So I just wanted to keep people aware that we received it, all right? We'll have a lot more information as I can dive into it.
Well, we would have to, we would have to do it this town meeting. We wouldn't be able to do it in the fall.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. I'd rather just get as much information to people as soon as possible, so we can react quickly. Okay?
You're welcome.
Uh, the next item on the board's agenda is a discussion about the Pondville 40B. In the board's packet, uploaded in the agenda, was a, a draft letter that we will be submitting to Mass Housing. So I wanted to, I know the board was interested to see the comments that staff had regarding concerns. There's also a memo from our plane director, Rich McCarthy, that I think Rich intends to send as well on behalf of the plane board. We will also incorporate, uh, citizen feedback that we've received so far. The board has received several communications. We will forward that and compile that as part of our submission of, um, you know, concerns regarding this project.
I want to compliment you in the contents of the letter. Very well-written, and you incorporated all of the issues we've talked about and brought forward. So I think you did an excellent job of compiling that, so well done.
I will give credit to the staff. We had a site visit that included all staff, so I do appreciate that. Uh, I think we did take feedback from the community. I mean, this was, we, we put a lot of work into this. And I want to credit our council too for helping us put this together. So if the board wants to add anything further to this draft, more than willing to, to sort of put that together and incorporate that. But just to clarify and make sure people are very aware, we're going to send, submit, submit this letter, include Rich's memo, but will also include resident concerns as well that we've received so far.
Well, I have one question, but really for my fellow board members. We've not had a discussion, so I, I don't know how you feel about it. I will certainly speak mine. And I, I think this is an incredibly too-dense project for that area and do not support that level of density. I would like to know how you feel. Kevin?
I, I do agree. 200 rental apartments in that area is way too many, in my opinion.
Yes, I agree. And I think that in reading, uh, feedback from residents, I think that it's important to note though, that with a 40B project, we have, like, this is our kind of only opportunity to give some pushback. We don't have control. Sometimes our letters from, um, people at Norfolk are like, your project, this is not our project. We did not dream up this project. We did not propose this project. We are not, as Jim is stating, we're not endorsing the project. We're required to, um, respond to the requests because of the law. And so it is dense and is big. It does offer us, um, a 40B, um, a closer pathway to Safe Harbor. But wow, it's, it's big. It's, Norfolk is little and it's very big. So I agree.
To me, Safe Harbor is not worth the impact that 200 units will have on that part of our community and the infrastructure issues associated with that. I, and I'm not suggesting you meant that, but, um, well, the reason I ask is that one of the things I thought we might consider is a formal vote of this board expressing our concern over the density of this project. It's, as you said, it's a ZBA issue. Uh, all 40Bs are before the ZBA. But we, we are the executive branch and we do have a right to, and are requested to express that opinion. And I often thought that votes have more weight than words. And I'm not saying we're voting against it. I personally am saying I, I would vote to have expressed concern over the level of density for that area of town. So I would ask you to consider that.
I think the level of density, as well as the, um, the Mediacomic Greenway is, is a really big deal. Like that it interferes with that initiative, I think is also a very big deal. So there's some significant concerns about the project.
Kevin?
I agree. The project is just, like you said, too dense for that area.
But how would you feel about a vote, a formal vote expressing that?
Yes, I would vote.
I'm not asking how you would vote.
Okay, okay, okay. What are you asking me?
I'm just asking, are, are, would you be supportive of, of considering a vote to go into this letter expressing our concern over the density? And I think Mediacomic Greenway as well should be stated.
Yes.
You would be supportive of that?
Yes.
I would as well.
All right. Then do I have a proposal to make such a vote? Would you care to, sir?
I'll make a proposal. We.
A motion?
A motion that we put it in, put it in there that we state, we feel that is too dense for the area.
And I would add the Mediacomic Greenway.
I would add the Mediacomic Greenway as well?
Yes. Okay.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have our marchers.
It helps. I think it, it at least helps. And it, it solidifies our view on it.
One thing that I did want to offer opportunity, we obviously have Rich here, but there, I do have Sue Jacobson here, who's, um, who here, who is here to speak regarding the status of Safe Harbor. You know, how you, we've entered in the past, what the project works, et cetera. I think it'd be good for Sue to give that information, because as Anita mentioned, there's been a lot of, um, a misunderstanding of how we've gotten to this process, particularly, you know, we've explicitly heard that this is a town, uh, project that we're pursuing, which obviously is not the case. So I think I would like to have Sue speak to that, and obviously Rich will chime in as well.
Welcome, Sue.
Thanks, thanks for having me. Comfy chairs. Yes, please.
Anyone that you like. You have your choice.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sue Jacobson, the Affordable Housing Director. So what I thought I'd go through tonight is just how Safe Harbor happens, when the last time was we were in Safe Harbor. We entered into Safe Harbor in July of 2020. The projects that got us into Safe Harbor were 194 Main Street, 67 Lawrence Street, which at that time was known as Abbeyville. Now it's Waits Crossing. And 144 Seekonk Street, Lakeland Farms, Lakeland Hills, I'm sorry. The 194 Main Street is the residence, nothing's going on, but it's where Bork's was located. So we need 32 units for two years of Safe Harbor, or 16 units for one year of Safe Harbor. These three projects allowed us two years of Safe Harbor. It starts from the date that the first project is permitted and stamped by the town clerk. So your two-year timeframe starts, started for us on July 27th of 2020. And our Safe Harbor, even though the next two projects weren't approved until September, they don't allow you to piggyback on that time. So we came out of Safe Harbor in July of 2022. Like I said, it's 16 units for a year, or 32 units for two years. You know, we, we do have some projects, like, we chatted a little bit about this today in, in our housing trust meeting. We do have a couple of projects that if they were to come in and be, they have, one in particular has a letter of, two have letters from Mass Housing of eligibility. If those two projects were to come in, we would enter, and they were approved, we would be, and they would allow us to go into Safe Harbor. But they're, while they have eligibility letters, they have not filed yet before the zoning board of appeals. The other thing I just wanted to bring up was, um, our housing production plan, because evidently there's some confusion on our housing production plan. So our housing production plan was approved on October 12th of 2022, and it is in effect until October 11th of 2027. When I saw that date again today, Rich, I thought, oh, boy, we're going to be working on that again in no time. It, it takes about a full year to, to get through your housing production plan, make all the changes and the updates. We, when we did this last time, we did some, um, we had some consulting services. And then Rich and I, to try to keep the cost down, we were very involved with them. But it's a long process, and then it goes into the Department of Housing and Community Development for approval. So we are, we do have a housing production plan as well through 2027. And, um, you know, Safe Harbor, you're, you're in and then you're out. And unless you're, you have, can produce those units, again, it's a timing thing. It's very tricky because it's the day that it's permitted. It's like them falling on and off the subsidized housing inventory.
So I'm just going to summarize a little bit in layman's terms for, for the people who are watching and just say, the state says a certain percentage of our housing needs to be affordable, and they have criteria for that. If we have that percentage of housing that's affordable for folks, then these projects come in and we can tell them no, or we can make them follow our bylaws in building of the projects. If we, if we don't have enough, um, units to constitute Safe Harbor, they can kind of do what they want. And our, well.
Excuse me for interrupting. It's not to constitute State Harbor. So we have to get to 10%.
10%.
And then we can accept or reject. Safe Harbor buys you either a year or a two-year pause.
Sorry about that.
Yes.
So if we don't have the 10% of affordable housing, then we are at the mercy of, to put it bluntly, that they don't have to follow our bylaws, or they don't have to follow our rules. And they can build a 200-unit, um, complex to, to say, oh, we're bringing affordable housing to Norfolk. And our hands are kind of tied, other than things like this elegant letter that, um, our town administrator and our departments have put together to give feedback. But it's, it's harder to affect change, and so.
Correct. And I will say too, though, I think it's important to say that our zoning board of appeals has done a good job. I, I, I'm not sure that any project that came in with the number they came in with is the number that they were approved at. Because you have to make, you have to take into consideration some different, for example, traffic and water and septic. And even though they can not pay attention to our bylaws, it still has to, it, it has to work, so to speak, to the density of that project. You know, my hope would be that our zoning board along, while working through the permitting process with this developer, potentially could maybe get, get that number down to a smaller number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, questions? Um, okay. Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any questions on it either.
Are we all set with that agenda item?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue.
Oh, I have a question. Sorry. My brain is operating a little slow tonight. Is it possible, when you make your new housing production plan, that you can piggyback on some of the work done by the master plan? Will some of those projects overlap?
Hello? Yes, we do take that into consideration.
Just to spare you some work and energy.
Correct. And, and Rich is very involved in the housing production plan, because he kind of is the, the gentleman that brings all the pieces together of the different boards and planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a small tidbit to that. So what we, in this particular instance, the master plan piggybacked on the work of the housing production plan.
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
And the next version will be vice versa.
Vice versa.
All right?
All right.
So the next item on the board's agenda is another review of the warrant. The board had the draft warrant, um, at our last meeting. I just want to discuss a few of the changes. There were small, you know, grammatical, uh, changes and some different conversations I had with council and our plane director on some further changes. But I won't go through the warrant entirely. I'll just point out the changes. We removed one of the articles regarding the shortfall in the wastewater district after consultation with finance director. It wasn't necessary. We are removing the proposed, uh, bylaw change regarding, regarding the town clerk fees. After diving into that, I think Carol, myself, and the team, we want to do it right. There's some more things that we have to put into that work, so we'll wait for the fall. Uh, and also I would point out for Article 29, I did incorporate the changes the board, um, said they wanted to see in the, the article regarding some town meeting changes. So we put a no later than time for, uh, it's Article 29, if you're looking for it. Uh, we put a no later than the third Wednesday in May for in terms of meeting. That was after some feedback from the board and advisory committee. I'll wait till people get there.
It's not done, um.
And then, um.
So the changes here are at least two, five-day weeks? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so we would say we have town meeting no later than the third Wednesday in May.
Okay.
That allows the board the flexibility to change the date as we have. And, you know, the moderators request the date changes, so it gives us that flexibility. But it also doesn't push it too far late, later in May. And at least it lets the residents and people know that we're going to, you know, consistently meet before this time period. We also propose the, you know, some little flexibility in terms of the moderators' meeting. This was after feedback from advisory, the moderator, and obviously our team, doing five days before town meeting instead of the two weeks. And then in terms of the motions, I hope that the change that I've put in here, based on the board's feedback, is, is when an article comes before town meeting, the proponent of a warrant article shall be recognized first for the purpose of making a, a motion on the article. The proponent shall provide the motion for the town clerk.
I sincerely hope that we can get that through, because that, that is the right way to do it. That's the way most towns do it.
Correct.
And that is the correct way to do it.
And so that's something that, as I told the board, that was something that I had spoke with the moderator before about. I gave advisory the heads up. That was something we're considering. So if the.
Were they opposed to it?
The moderator supported. The moderator supported it, advisory, they didn't give an opinion on it. I just think, you know, advisory's typically made the motion, so I'm sure there'll be a discussion.
This article does not prevent them. In fact, in no way does it prevent them from making their normal recommendations associated with it. This is just whoever, if CPC is bringing forward an article, CPC should be the body that goes and presents the article. And then advisory can comment both for and against if that is the case, or whatever they vote. That's the role of advisory. The proponent of the article should be the one to bring it forward.
As you mentioned, typically in a lot of other communities, that's the process.
That is the process.
In the article, the advisory's in the warrant that's sent to residents, advisory's going to have a recommendation there. And if this change were to occur, once the motion's made, advisory would give a recommendation at town meeting as well, too. So it doesn't make a substantive change.
No, it doesn't change the purpose or the process. It just brings forward the party that is advocating for whatever that particular article is.
But it keeps the advisory, I always think of the advisory as like at the local level, the checks and balances of government, so it keeps the advisory in place to serve that important role for us as a community.
Absolutely. That's their role.
Yeah. So I think, you know, and then next week, the Planning Board is having their hearings on their planning articles, and so that should sort of finalize the language in terms of those articles. So my plan is at the next board meeting to have the warrant in its final version for the board to execute, but I will share it with advisory now so we can get the process started, to schedule meetings. The other consideration that I want for the board, there are two citizen petition articles that I mentioned last time. We had previously talked about the board, you know, having recommendations for articles. I don't know if that's something we want to do, or if we want to have the petitioner come before the Select Board. I don't know how you want to handle a citizen petition. Do you want to hear from Mr. Oliveri regarding his petition?
Well, petitions will be on the board, will be on the warrant.
It's on the warrant.
They're there.
Correct. I just don't know if the board wants to have a position, Advisory Committee mentioned, maybe the Select Board, they would like to hear from the Select Board, their opinion on the proposed changes, because one of them, for instance, changes the appointment of the Advisory Committee from the moderator to the Select Board.
Right.
I think that might be something you might want to consider weighing in. I don't know, but...
So similar, I'm just trying to follow, similar to what we did on the previous agenda item, where we took a vote as a board to say our opinion, we could listen to the citizens' opinion, and then we'd have an opportunity to talk about it, but then also to weigh in as a board, so that the community understood our perspective of that.
That's exactly what I was thinking. But that's, yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I would be curious to why Mr. Oliveri, the first one I understand, because the moderator's term used to be one year forever. And at the request of the moderator, we agreed to put an article on and change it to three years, and it passed. Now we're making a request to go back to one year. But I am curious, the change between, I think I understand his logic, but I'd like to hear it from him.
So I was asking, would you like me to bring him in for the board or ask him to come? I will do that.
I mean, I think the logic is fairly obvious. It's three people making a selection versus one person making a selection. But I'd like to hear his words on that. Okay, yeah, let's get him in.
Okay, I'll do that.
Sure, I'm sure Jack would love to come in.
All right. And then if the board wants to hear from any other departments, I don't really think there's too much on the warrant. This is a normal boilerplate. We have a public shade tree bylaw, so if you want to hear from our DPW director about that, obviously, Rich, Rich is here tonight. If you have any questions that are burning at the moment for planning articles, we could do that while we have them, or, you know, the board can let me know if there's anyone else that you want to hear from for the next meeting.
When is the advisory board taking on the Planning Board articles? Next week?
No, Planning, yeah, Planning Board is the...
It won't be until April, I would imagine, huh?
Yeah, when the advisory board, I would think this.
I don't have the schedule in front of me. It's later on.
I would like to sit in on a couple of those article debates, especially the accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will follow with the board. They did talk about their schedule at their last meeting.
All right, thank you.
But it's not within the next two weeks, so...
No, Erica sent that email that, yeah, it's not on.
No, it's not.
No, I know it's not next week, but I'm just curious when it was, if they knew.
I'll follow with the board on that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Anything else there?
Kevin, Anita?
We're good.
Okay. All right, our next item is the discussion of the budget. All right, so I'm going to ask our Finance Director, Todd Lindmark, to come up. I'm going to sit right there. Rich, thank you. Hope you'll come and hear this. So what we'll do is, following our last conversation with the Select Board, Todd and I made some changes, some small changes to the budget. So at our last board meeting, we had a $1.4 million deficit, so now we're about $1.3 million deficit. So we'll just give you our normal budget presentation. We'll run through that. We have some recommendations and so forth regarding that. And I'd like Todd to speak to it, and then I'll chime in as we get towards the end of this presentation.
Hi, Todd. Welcome.
Thank you. You'll have to pardon my voice. I'm a little under the weather, but we'll get into the presentation. First slide is going to be revenues. Comparatively, FY '25 versus FY '26. Tax base, we take the levy limit of last year, add the 2.5% plus our new growth, that increases to the $40,00837. Local receipts, there'll be a slide later on identifying the local receipts. Last year they were at 4.1 million. We've increased them a little over 5% this year to 4.3 million. State aid increased a little bit from the 4.6 million to the 4.8. Other funds, last year, we utilized $195,000 of ARPA monies, plus $40,000 for ambulance receipts. That goes to ambulance billing. This year, we've got $40,000 going towards the ambulance billing for other funds. Free cash, we utilized last year's budget, $605,000 to be determined as to what we use for free cash on the final number for the budget. Overall change is about 1.2. Again, that doesn't include the free cash and increase revenues of about two, almost 2.5%. Going to state aid, line by line, increases across the board. Overall, the average works out to be just under 4% or a total increase for us of $185,738. Next page.
A quick question on Chapter 70.
Yep.
Last year, we had about 120 grand. Am I thinking of a wrong number that came in after the fact?
Subsequently, yes.
Okay.
Again, we utilize the budget that's provided to us.
No, I know.
And then ultimately, they come up to a new number. Town revenue adjustments, as I indicated before, across the board, average of about 5.64% increase, or $233,500. And then it's broken down. We've identified the line items here. What we did was a process going through, looking at the last three to four-year averages of the actual receipts received, done a comparison to say, okay, you know, using the amounts that we received on average, where are we with our current amounts for revenue projections, and then made some adjustments, up or down, depending on the category. And those are detailed there. Any questions on those items there? Some of the highlights on the revenue, new growth number. We budgeted $650,000 for FY '25. The actual new growth number came in at 575, a little bit down. We're proposing bringing that number down to 600,000 to be a little bit more in line with what we anticipate. Building permits still continue to be strong, very good for this year, above what was budgeted so far for the year. Stating aid increases, as I indicated, almost 4%. Currently proposed and subject to finalization at the state level. And then adjustments in local receipts potentially do have ripple effects, so if you increase expectation on local receipts, you're potentially lowering free cash on a going-forward basis. Proposed budget in summary, last year was $52,934,360. This year, currently, as we have it, minus some adjustments we'll talk about, but at the $1.4 million deficit, was $55,318,804. That includes all the different departments and a couple of adjustments up to that point. And then we'll talk about some additional adjustments we're doing for the budget. Any questions on that?
What do you have the schools in at, the elementary schools?
4%. And that number is...
They're a little over 4.
In your budget summary sheet that you have before you, it has the number broken out. We also uploaded that on the agenda for the public to have as well.
4.59 is what they're having.
Yeah. So we have them plugged in at 4%, which is $622,603 increase currently. Next page. Some of the bigger budget drivers, as we discussed, education is the biggest component for us, about 5%. Across the board, hit to us again, that's with Norfolk Public Schools at 4%. King Philip at the 5.5%. Tri-County came in at 18%, and that had to do with additional 10 kids participating in the program. Then Norfolk Agricultural went up about 5%. Similar number of kids changing the tuition rates. Norfolk County Retirement, we had an adjustment of about 6.8%. That's going to impact us about $210,000. Medical insurance, while the rate increases 12.1%, what I do is an analysis to say, okay, who's on the health insurance as of now, and then base it off of those numbers. So that increase dollars for us is $479,000 to the overall budget. And then public safety costs, police and fire, police are $195,000 add, and fires $49,000 due to contracts and expenses increasing. What's not included in this number for Tri-County, the $138,000 increase, is the $405,000 debt assessment that we'll talk about on the next agenda item.
One item before we transition to the next slide that I want to point out, because we do have some further residents and people engaged for the budget. In our last meeting, I wanted to point out for the board, the new revenue that the town has compared to fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 is $1,203,760. Before we get to the next slides, I just want to point out, education alone is $1,342,570. So that expenditure alone is more than the revenue that we have available to us.
I ask, before we go to the next one, there's a discrepancy between the medical insurance on this page and on the benefits or insurance on the page before. It's 10.63, but this is 12.1. Does it just include different things?
So the rate increase is 12.1, but the increase overall, based again on the numbers they're actually using it, so year to year, I look at a timeframe from end of December, January, that bill, who's on it, apply the rate, and the difference is that 10 and change. So that's the actual difference. The 12.11 was the rate change.
Thank you.
Also, to add a little bit onto that as well, in the summary packet that the board has, the larger Excel, a few pages in, about one, two, three, four pages in, it has proposed employee benefits, and that outlines all the various things in the day, who's medical insurance, life insurance, longevity, and so on and so forth. So you can see how the 10.74% overall is employee benefits for you. Okay? Want me to do this? You want me to take over for you now, Todd? Thank you, Todd. By the way, I want to say thank you to Todd, and obviously departments, for the work that they put into this budget. But thank you, Todd. He's been under the weather, and he's been helping me get this prepared for tonight, so thank you. So to continue on Norfolk Public School appropriation, I spoke with Ingrid, and I wanted to put a slide about where we are at this moment. So the Budget Subcommittee and the Superintendent are currently working on a proposed fiscal year '26 budget, that about 4.59%, but they're working to reduce it further. We've, you know, been transparent with them that, you know, we've had a budget placeholder at 4%. So the last communication with Ingrid was that they're working on it, and they're attempting to get to 4%, but I think we'll hear back from that committee and that group. Their current proposal, she asked me to say it reduces five positions. I don't know what those five positions are, and it includes restructuring of other positions. They also may potentially request to use an additional $50,000 of the Special Education Stabilization Funds for the board and the public. Last year, we used $125,000 to help balance the budget last year. So there's about $125,000 remaining in that stabilization fund. So they may request to use $50,000 of it for this fiscal year. That requires a vote of the school committee as well as the Select Board to utilize that fund. They're going to have their budget hearing on March 11th, so I think that's important for people to be aware of when that hearing regarding their budget is. And then, once again, just letting people know, we're in our budget proposal that we are currently utilizing, where we do have that deficit that we'll get to, it is using 4%, and that equates to about an additional $622,000 for the school. And as was mentioned previously, we did get some additional state aid last year, and when we do do that, the process is, we do allocate that at the fall special town meeting. So that would be the same process if the Chapter 70 number were to change as part of the deliberative process with the state. And then effectively, you know, this is something that our superintendent asked to include there, you know, if you're accounting for the one-time sources of funds, it's about a 2.6% increase over last year's budget. If you're accounting for their usage of one-time funds, which was their special ed fund, along with some other funds that they utilized to balance their end of the budget. Some notable budget adjustments that we have in the packet so far, I want to point out in the Select Board Town Administrator Office, these past few years, we've been reducing our expenditure lines as much as possible, but this year, you're going to see a growth of close to $8,000. I want to point out that this is actually moving expenditure from one department to the Select Board Office. It's our Blackboard 311 notification system. Previously, that was funded by a grant, and it was, that grant was pursued in sort of, I would say, Betsy Fidgel in that planning department, she was instrumental in us getting those grant funds. So it was budgeted in the planning department. We're not getting that grant any longer. We have to account for the expense. I'm trying to negotiate with the company to bring it down, but that's the reason why you're seeing an $8,000, close to $8,000 increase in the Select Board budget. Nothing new there, just this expense shift. Proposing additional $30,000 for a managed detection response. As the board's aware, and our staff is aware, the town is, along with a lot of other communities, are really being sort of extremely attacked with cybersecurity attacks, phishing attacks, spam attacks, et cetera. We had a major cybersecurity issue earlier in the year. One of the proposals that our IT Director proposed was having a managed detection response system. It allows us to more quickly respond to those attacks. Right now, we're susceptible, I would say right now, the way the system works is that our IT Director has to respond to these events wherever they are, et cetera. He has to come on site. This response system would better help us navigate cybersecurity attacks. It's an outside company where they can immediately, if an issue happens, immediately directly respond to that incident and then notify our IT Director. Buys us some time. It's definitely a recommendation that he's recommending, so we've included in the budget so far, but obviously, that's a discussion we can talk about later on. We have in the budget right now, $28,000 for body cameras. We've had this discussion with the board. I know the board, this is something that the board wants to see us pursue, we're, you know, collectively bargaining this. We applied for a grant previously that we didn't get. So once again, we'll discuss this about one of these budget items later on.
Is that what pushes the police to 5.7?
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think that plays a part in it. Obviously, it does incorporate, we are collectively bargaining with our groups now, but we're incorporating, you know, a COLA adjustment for them as well. So we're accounting for that. Normally, some communities, they may not do that while they're negotiating. I thought to be transparent, to let us know where at, we put in a figure that I think is where we would settle on for next year. So that's incorporated in that police budget number as well. Yeah. In DPW, we have a reduction of $46,000 for a laborer position in the transfer station. We're also in the Administration Department, we're accounting for our co-op program. We've had this program available to us before. I don't think we've really explicitly budgeted, so we're accounting for that. Obviously, that's something that we can talk about as we get to some further recommendations. And then in the budget, as well, is we're utilizing $30,000, and this is probably not the way I want to say this, but Ann Proto has notified me that she's planning to retire in December of this year.
For our town.
So we're excited for Ann. But in terms of budgeting purposes, we're saying, you know what, let's be proactive about that. Let's... know what? Let's be proactive about that. Let's put in the budget an opportunity to capture some savings with that transition there. So we've incorporated that in our budget submission so far. So we have some proposals regarding budget, or some levers that are available to the board to consider. There's obviously additional ones, and if the board wants to see any further ones, but this is what we have at the moment. So we can selectively choose not to backfill positions. I'm highlighting some of the positions that we've had vacant. We have assessing, assessing technician position. We have our Assistant Town Administrator HR Director position. We're going to have our Facilities Director position, as the board's aware. One position that we may have, and that will have our Deputy Chief speak to, is potentially a patrol officer position being available. And currently, we have a firefighter, paramedic position that is vacant at the moment. We have some further departmental reduction opportunities to take a look at. We have the Managed Detection Response System, obviously. That's $30,000. You know, something we consider. We can consider the body cameras, as well as utilizing $10,000 in council and agency formula grant to help cover some of their salary costs. Other communities do utilize that grant for salaries. I've spoken with our Council and Agent Director. We get approximately $38,000 a year in the formula grant. We do have some funds that are rolled over. We know they utilize it for programming. We don't want to dip too deep in that, but we do think it might be prudent to consider utilizing a small piece of it to help mitigate some of the salary costs. One thing that Todd sort of mentioned that we do want to highlight, these positions, they do have some ancillary benefits to include, like health insurance, et cetera, that are not reflected into the figures that you have on this sheet here. Some other considerations for budget adjustments for revenue. One is obviously the utilization of free cash. I think we know we're going to use some portion of free cash to balance the budget. The question is, how much? And we can discuss that. Before I get to the next item, I'll say, long-term, I think, you know, obviously, the board and the communities are aware we have the Southwood project that potentially may be something in the future to consider, which provides additional revenue opportunity. But, you know, in the situation we're in, we are in a revenue situation. I think that's pretty clear. You know, maybe we have to look at, you know, the prohibition on retail marijuana. You know, it's something to consider. I think in this type of environment and this budget, you got to put all options on the table. Obviously, not proposing anything there, but I think it's something to consider.
May I ask a question about that? Did that prohibition come from the Select Board, or did that come from town meeting?
It was town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting. Yeah.
It was a very heated discussion.
Yes, I'm sure it was. It wasn't here before. And as I said, I'm not recommending it, but I think as we get into this process to see where we're at, you have to put all options on the table and go through that process, see what you want to do.
I don't think I've missed a town meeting, but I don't remember that.
Yeah, there was an article to allow it, but it was at its infancy at that point in time. And it's when towns were given the opportunity to consider whether or not they wanted it within their, within their community. And there was an article, and it was a lengthy, to say it was a lengthy discussion. And it was a narrow vote. But again, it was at the very beginning. There was no experience. There was no way to pass judgment on the pros and cons of what it might or might not impact on the community.
And now we could see how it's affected.
Now there is, now there is several years of experience. Yeah.
Then the other item is sort of one of the big-ticket items, as we addressed before, the Tri-County debt assessment for the school projects is about $405,000. That is not included in the deficit that we have in that sheet. So that would be in addition to the 1.3-something million dollar deficit. So it would be about $1.7 million. So we did check to see if we could utilize any savings from the fire station project, which we do know that there will be some. Todd, as well as our treasurer, checked in with our financial advisor. It's what we expected, but we wanted to check every opportunity to sort of mitigate that cost. We cannot use the fire station project to mitigate those costs. So the options that we have available to us are to utilize free cash for it, to do a debt exclusion vote in May potentially, or what I'm proposing, and I think what we'll talk about later, is the utilization of stabilization funds to account for those costs. I think, you know, the board, we can discuss, you know, having a May debt exclusion vote, I don't know if that's the right course of action. I'll let the board talk about that. But I'm potentially recommending utilize stabilization funds to cover the Tri-County portion of debt assessment for this year. Do you want to talk about it now, or let me finish and then get to it, or what do you want to do?
Let's talk about it now, because I think it's probably the right time to do it. So, Kevin, let me turn to you. Your thoughts on the budget.
Which portion of it?
Take your pick.
Well, I definitely feel that, you know, so not to backfill some of these positions, I'm in favor, because we got such a huge deficit, we got to reduce it somehow. And it seems like all departments are affected kind of equally, so it's not selectively saying, we're going to take three people from you. It looks like everyone's sacrificing down the line.
How about the use of free cash or stabilization?
For Tri-County?
Well, however, I mean, it's interchangeable number. I mean, you can use them any way you want, but I'm just asking your thoughts on that, the use of one-time funds, because they're both one-time funds.
I hate to use it all up with this and not reduce the budget.
Well, if we use, I mean, we've been using free cash on the budget forever. Varying amounts, but we try to keep it to a minimum because they are one-time funds and we're using for reoccurring costs, which is fiscally not the smartest thing to do.
That's why reducing these positions would...
But we've always used some, always. So are you, would you be supportive of using some free cash on this?
Yeah, some, but I also am supportive of reducing as well.
Well, it's going to be a combination of both. The reducing is not up for grabs.
And as we get through the final bit of slides, I mean, I have some recommendations on some reductions for the board to consider. Obviously, it's the board's decision, but, you know, speaking with Todd, we have some recommendations for the board to consider.
I'm just trying to get the pulse at a high level. Any of your thoughts?
Yeah.
At the high level.
At the high level, I would like to stay away from free cash as much as we can. I think, I'm sad to ask our departments to tighten their belts, because they've been tightening. Every year, we've been tightening our belts. And so stabilization is interesting, and I recognize using one-time monies is a dangerous slippery slope. So I'm eager to hear Justin's recommendations. And Todd's? Sorry. Don't need to.
Todd will chime in too.
I mean, we don't have a choice but to use one or the other or both. We don't have a choice. Or we make dramatic personnel cuts. There's no other way around it. And I appreciate that the schools are cutting positions. That's always a very hard thing to do. KP cut 19 positions last year in order to come in with their budget. So these are not easy decisions. But I do, we don't have a choice. The question is, we have to do it in a way that it does not impair our bond rating, number one, which is a concern. If we take, if we get totally disproportionate, I mean, we can absorb it short-term, but not long-term. We'll lose our bond rating if we allow that to continue.
Correct. And I will address that as we go on, but you're absolutely correct. Yep.
Okay. Well, good, high level. Why don't you take us through your recommendations?
We're almost done. The last couple of highlights, I just want to point out that there are several still reductions in personnel that we're still carrying from previous budgets. I don't have to run through all of them, but, you know, we have executive assistant and fire building, it was about one and a half FTEs. DPW was one FT. Our overall town budget for this proposal, as it is now, without any further reductions, and this is accounting for general government, you know, human resources, et cetera, excluding education and fixed costs as a debt, it's 2.65%. I mean, that's a pretty lean budget. And like I said before, I didn't give the introduction of our budget, but I asked our departments to try to be around 3%. And obviously, some departments are up or low, and we have to adjust for that. But overall, town budget increase is 2.65%, and we still have a large deficit. I think we have to be very clear about that. That poses a very tough budget for us to navigate for now and for the future. You know, we talked about last year that, you know, this is not going to be feasible. We foresaw we could do this, you know, last year. We could do this this year as well. But I think we have to be transparent, and I think if Todd wants to chime in as well. The way that Prop 2 and 1/2 works is, at some points, communities have to take a look at override. We're not recommending looking at override this year. I think our recommendations poses some further reductions on town side and utilization of some one-time sources of revenue. But I've got to be transparent and clear that, you know, moving forward, the next budget, this, we can't maintain this. You know, if you're looking, you're looking at a total amount of free cash that we have available to us now of $1.7 million. If you do the 1.3 where we're at now, along with $400,000 for Tri-County, that's all your free cash. And free cash funds our capital, because it funds our transfers into stabilization, et cetera, OPEB, all these different things that we value and we care about. And that does have an impact on our bond rating. We're done.
Free cash also covers our snow and ice, which actually, we have to cover $187,000 at the moment. So our free cash.
That is a deficit we can carry forward, though.
Yep.
The only one that we can carry forward. Wouldn't you know, we get snow this year, huh?
So I'll move forward there, but, you know, I think I want to be clear, and this is something that the board advisory and us will have to navigate forward. But, you know, in the future, an override is something that we've got to talk about. We have a revenue issue in terms of expenditures.
Well, I can just jump in on this. I think one of the things that we have to do this year, and you and I talked about this two years ago. Remember when we talked about the perfect storm?
Perfect storm, yeah.
I said the perfect storm hasn't arrived yet. I think, as I've looked through this and thought about it a lot, I think you have to look at this as a two-year budget cycle. I know that's unusual to say that, and our forecasting has been very helpful on that. For example, you know, we traditionally use free cash for capital. I think you'd almost, I think we have to go forward next year and say that we will not, unless it is a critical to keep the door open capital investment, we cannot afford to do any more capital expenditures for a period of time. We can't continue to deplete that free cash like that. We cannot. We had a huge amount last year, over $3 million, if I remember, right?
The free cash was $3 million.
Certified over $3 million, and we've already spent 1.3 of it. So I think we have to look at this as a two-year cycle. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves in the same situation again. And I don't, there is no, there is no choice unless we make absolutely draconian cuts. There is no choice but to use free cash. I agree with you on the stabilization. I think that the Tri-County is the right place to use stabilization funds for several reasons. We can't afford right now to put it in the operating budget. I do not favor an override. I'm speaking for me. I do not favor an override at this point in time. And it also sends the message, because this is an obligation that the town voted for, and we have to pay for it. It's not a, this isn't something we can just check off and say, well, we'll skip it this year. And our enrollment's going up, I think, too, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah. So that number's only going to go higher. Between the enrollment, between the budget and the fixed cost, it's only going to go up.
That's a good point, because the debt assessment is based on enrollment.
On enrollment.
That number can fluctuate.
Exactly.
As enrollment goes up, that figure can go up. So that's correct.
So that's why I'm saying a two-year, you got to look at this in a two-year horizon. And it's quite a few students, I think, isn't it? Yeah, that's a lot for us. That's a lot. Your thoughts, Kevin?
I agree. I think we just need to make the cuts, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of an override, you know, if we use the stabilization fund to pay for Tri-County. But I see, we have to do a lot of cuts. I'm not in favor of using free cash or try to absorb all of it, you know?
Anita?
I think we are going to have to look at some of those positions of not hiring out those positions. And I, and I just would hate to do an override for, just to run the town. Like, that's really tough to swallow. But I also see, looking backwards, like, we've been making cuts, and we've been making cuts, and when we reduce positions, people in town need to know that we're also reducing services. We're reducing things that are available to people. So...
This is my last slide.
I was going to say, walk us through your recommendations.
This is the last slide. Now, I just want to clarify, just for the public. We had this discussion in the previous budget, you know, where we're at and what we're recommending, and this is Todd and I together, you know, after having conversations. I want to be clear, we understand our community. I think we understand the board. We're not recommending an override this year, right? But I think it's something for the future we have to talk about. And just like you said, it's looking at this as a multi-budget process. So I want to be transparent about that work, if we're going to pursue that in the future. But in terms of this year, recommending the freezing of hiring of two positions. And I do have our police deputy chief here, as well as our fire chief, because I want to give those departments the opportunity to speak about what effect that may have, and give the boards some time to reflect on it. But we're proposing freezing a patrol officer position. This is an anticipated opening. I think we do know our police chief is retiring, but we anticipate that a patrol officer position will open up. So this is $105,000 we can realize. And I think I'm going to recommend that we incorporate that into this budget. That's a decent amount of savings. Recommend taking a look at the firefighter, paramedic position. That currently is a vacant position. I've spoken with Chief Kenny, and we've, you know, deliberately not filled that position at the moment to give ourselves some flexibility there. We're proposing realizing some salary savings with the retirement of the police chief. I'm utilizing $30,000 in the budget for that, which would, you know, will be reflected later on in the sheets that you have. I'm also proposing $30,000 in potential salary savings with the recreation director's retirement. We recommend removing the funding for the purchase of body cameras and reapplying for that grant. I've spoken with Deputy Chief Palladini and Chief Hines about maybe bringing someone who can help assist us with tightening up our grant. Hire a consultant. Let's try again for that rather than utilizing town funds and see where that goes. We're proposing to see a way to utilize some grant funds to cover a small portion of salary costs I talked about earlier there. So the total amount captured by these adjustments, just these adjustments alone, are $236,314. The deficit in that summary packet that you have would be reduced from $1.3 million to $1.1 million, which is a bit closer to where we were, you know, for example, last year. Obviously, we spent a decent amount of free cash there. So the work to date for the budget deficit, we started at $1.8 million. We added $233,000 based on additional revenue by adjustments in local receipts. And then we reduced town departmental expenses by incorporating these $458,000. And then these additional accounts, these additional amounts would be $236,000, bringing us down to $1.1 million deficit, which is a little bit more manageable. But obviously, you know, if there's other items that the board wants to consider or discuss, this is the Select Board budget. Tell me what you want to do or who you want to hear from. And, you know, I obviously want, you know, Deputy Chief Kenny to speak to it.
What would be the savings of the first budget expenses of all the cuts there you made compared to the second one?
The proposals that we had before, earlier?
Yes.
Managed detection response, et cetera?
Yes. Yes, the budget right here that said all the cuts from the different departments and all that.
So I think you're talking about this slide right here.
Yes.
Correct. So you would account for assessing technician, that's $26,000. You account for the Assistant Town Administrator, that's $120,000. That's $146,000. The managed detection response, that'd be additional $30,000. So 156. That'd bring you about a little more than $900,000. I think, like I said, one of the things that we want to do is give departments the opportunity to talk about why, you know, these values might be positions we might not want to consider. Obviously, can speak to the Assistant Town Administrator. Talk, and our Chief Assessor can speak to the assessing technician position. And then I obviously want Chief Kenny and our Deputy Chief to speak about the police and fire. I don't know when you want to do that, Jim. You want me to stop now, or do you want to hear from now?
Absolutely. Who wants to start? Deputy Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy floor.
By all means.
As Anita had just said, obviously, we cut, it's a decrease in service. I am very, very concerned about decreasing public safety for obvious reasons. My thoughts in terms of police service, there is absolutely no way we can decrease our minimum staffing on our shifts. Those numbers are populated based on our population, our increase in calls for service... Those numbers are populated based on our population, our increase in calls for service, as well as the level of service that we provide to the town, safety for the town and safety for the officers. So, we can't reduce our minimum staffing, that's off the table. Where we would have to pull from would be our school resource officer, our detective program, and/or our, we have one officer who is our radio IT officer, but he also does our accreditation. We are six months away from our initial assessment for accreditation, and obviously, to be an accredited department is incredibly important for us, not only is it increasing the professionalism of our officers, we have policies to back that up, but it keeps our officers, the police department and the town, out of liable positions. Should we lose that position and have to put that officer back into patrol, we're going to have to put a halt on the accreditation process. I think it goes without saying that school safety is incredibly important to everybody in this town. I think the benefit, though, of having our one and a half school resource officers is that they provide not only safety for the school, right, but they're providing educational programs, they're mitigating incidents that could potentially happen with children, they're providing support for families. So, I, I feel that reducing, we have that one and a half position, if we reduce, take away our half position, we have coverage in one school, we have one full-time officer that's now being spread thin between three schools. If we reduce detectives, we have one and a half positions in detectives. Their call volume and their caseload is extremely high right now. Not only do they manage the caseload, but they're also our court prosecutor, so they do all of the court work. So, reduction in that means it's going to be slower response time, slower turnaround with regards to cases. I have significant concerns about losing a position.
Are you saying that, that if we do not fill this position, we're going to lose the school safety officers?
Mm-hmm. So, we, my thought, and...
Which should be Norfolk and the middle school.
This just came to me yesterday, so I've had 24 hours to think about this, but we would probably have to pull either our part-time school resource officer, I don't know that we could pull our part-time detective. I, I think it would be completely detrimental to the work that needs to be done in that area. So, I would say it would have to be a school resource officer or our accreditation manager. So, we'd have to flush that out, I, I really can't say right now without looking at that.
24 hours doesn't give you a whole lot of time to figure that out.
It does not, it does not.
So, we're having a conversation?
This is off the cuff.
Yeah, I, I got you. Is this the gentleman that's going to the state police that you're losing?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yeah.
And then dependent on what happens with the chief position, there could be also some movement and opening there, so, you know, it remains to be seen with the future of, you know, that position and potentially a second, so...
So, tell me a little bit about the accreditation officer.
Sure. So, we have one patrol officer currently, and he, he has a number of duties, so, he, because we, you know, we're spread thin, and he, he takes the lion's share of a lot of this work. So, he manages our radios, all of our IT within the station, things, he works hand-in-hand with Ton. But he also is our accreditation manager. Previously, I was the accreditation manager. It's almost impossible, it's a full-time job, so, we kind of swap positions. So, he is the one doing, you know, the bulk of the work with accreditation. He submits the policies to me for review, and we work hand-in-hand on a lot, but without, without having this officer working on this, almost, I would say he's probably 30 to 35 hours a week, we're not going to be able to make our initial assessment in the fall, and we're probably going to have to put this off. And the amount of work that's gone into it, it would just be, it would be devastating, honestly.
So, it would jeopardize our assessment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, and I know, just one more question, then I'll be, I apologize. And I know your shift system, and I, I'm not a police officer, you, you're, you're the folks that need to make those decisions, but I know the logic of, of your shifts, and I fully understand why you're saying that's not a negotiable item for you. Okay, I have another question, but Kevin, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was referring to some of the cars. It seems like we have a lot of cars and a lot of fairly new cars. Is there any way we could do something with that to make a savings with that rather than...
In, in terms of what, with the vehicles?
We do some of the cars or maybe not replace three every, every year. It seems like the last couple of years, we've got quite a few new cars.
The difficult part is that the cars are at end-of-life. So, we have, you know, they run 24/7, the miles are high, and we get the recommendations based upon the service, that the cars, they run 24/7, we need those to be able to be...
I thought most of the cars were, a lot of the cars, they said they only want to run two shifts, or per, the cars will only run two shifts.
It depends, it depends, correct.
Well, it, the cars won't save us any money this year. Certainly for capital, they will, in terms of future purchases, that's a different discussion.
Right.
But that's, I mean, I guess gas, but I mean, short of that, it's not an operational cost. I don't, I'm puzzled on how that would help us. If you've got an idea, I'm, I'm open.
I think we talked about it, but Kevin, I think, is right in the sense that I think he's looking at it as if, realizes, like you said, Jim, some savings on the capital side? Because then that has an effect on the free cash, and then what free cash we use for the budget. So, I think that's what Kevin, they're sort of...
Yeah, I, I think we're looking at...
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what we got there.
I think we're looking at a tight freeze on capital next year, anyway. Just a heads up.
That's certainly a discussion.
Anita, questions?
No, I think that, I hate to ask it, because the police department is one of the jewels of our town, right? And so, I, I hate to ask it, but I think with more than 24 hours to think about it, perhaps there's ways that we can squeeze a little here and squeeze a little there and share, so we don't have a total loss of programming, but have to make compromises given our situation and the town. It's, it's just a really tight time right now, and it's not just tight for Norfolk, it's tight across our funding, our funding model isn't the best, and so, maybe there are clever ways to absorb the loss of that position without, unequivocally, like I had somebody write me one time and said, you know, "This bed in front of the library hasn't been weeded," and I said, "We reduce a position at DPW." Like, we can't reduce positions and continue to provide the same level of service. So, I'm not being naive about that, but perhaps there are ways that we can look cleverly as sharing responsibilities so that there isn't a total loss for your department, I would, I would hate for that to happen.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And in fairness to you and the chief, you've had no real time...
Correct.
To, to take a look at this.
And we will. I mean, we're certainly team players, we understand the position that the town is in.
It's a $100,000 bullet, and there are a lot of different ways we can get out $100,000.
Sure, that's not a call-out bullet.
And, and I know that's where you're going, and so...
No pun intended.
Uh, no pun intended. So, and, and we're not making any decisions, this is a discussion tonight, so...
Right.
We'll, we'll look forward to your wisdom as to where you are with this...
Okay.
At another, another time, but I do understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, good to see you, as always.
You as well.
Chief?
I got to meet your lovely wife last week.
Yes. She loved you, by the way.
Well, I loved her, too.
Well, this is all good to know.
I'd never met her before. Well, I met her, it was like, "Hi, Julie," and she's like, "Oh, Anita, Anita."
So, for the fire department, similarly to the police, I think the, our minimum manning is four per shift. If we reduce one, we'll have one shift that will go without. That is, I don't want to sound dramatic, but that would be, that's nearly untenable. Our demand for service has consistently gone up, as you all are well aware, since my second year here, I've been evaluating that and looking at how our callback system is working, how robust the callbacks are, and I've been proposing an increase in staffing. This would be taking a person away.
Is this a vacancy, or it...
So, right now, we have not hired a, a full-time replacement. We have a provisional person in play, which our internal policies allow for, which was a stopgap until we hired it permanently. So, right now, our directive is to not hire it permanently. We have a provisional in that will last for another, probably, I think, 45 days, 60 days, that's covering that gap. But without that person in play, a firefighter, paramedic, usually you'll hear people talk about staffing and it's all related to fire, right? The reality is, inside of our town borders, we don't have very many fires. Our prevention efforts are good, our safe efforts are good, that kind of thing, so, our building codes, working with our building commissioner, you know, those are all things that help us reduce our fire risk. But what has steadily been on the increase is the demand for emergency medical services. And what has been on the decrease is the amount of people or the robustness of my callbacks. So, if I go down to a shift of three, for example, if that was today, we have had two calls where we had to transport with three people, that in effect would lead the town with no one, with the exception of me or my deputy. And in a case like today, I'm teach, I was teaching a class in Rentham, which means I wouldn't have been here, which means you had one person for all of the risk in town, which is, in my humble opinion, totally unacceptable. This town has grown and progressed and worked very hard to get to the point where we were staffed with four, including working with grants, including prior to me, my predecessor, Chief Bushnell and Chief Pete, doing the exhaustive work of, you know, working through the budget, you know, and navigating to, to slowly edge us up to going from the days of two per shift to three per shift, then three with two peak hour people, now we're at four, we've been at four for the last five years. To go backwards, when our call volume is going up, is, is not, it's not doable. It really isn't. Like, you know, I examined the model that we used to use, which was, you know, three per shift, two peak hour people, and right now, during the time where we did that, our callbacks were very robust. The face of the department, the majority of the members were either single or living in town. That, the face, the makeup of the department is not like that anymore. So, this year, for example, during, when I was working on the annual report, I noticed we were up, our numbers for relying on mutual aid were significantly higher. So, the other potential impact for this in reducing that staffing is that we'll lose more than the 63,000 we save, because I will be farming out emergency medical calls to mutual aid agencies and giving them money rather than us keeping it in-house. I think one potential solution is, right now, we're on target for the fiscal year to bring in at least 100,000 more dollars than what we have previously in ambulance billing. That's because of the increase in call volume, one, or increase in number of transports, but also because we have worked with Todd and with our EMS billing company to make sure that we are keeping pace with the cost of delivering EMS services, and we have incrementally increased on about every two-year cycle, a 3% increase in our billing, which keeps us in pace with the region and the, you know, whatever, the marketplace. So, you know, if that's a potential solution, maybe look at, I know those funds are allocated and go towards our supplies and replacing the ambulances, maybe, you know, you know, we're going to need another new ambulance pretty soon, maybe there's something we delay. But, you know, I think the importance of having four people per shift is, you know, like I said, I've been proposing for the last couple of years to get two peak hour people back so that, you know, we could handle the demand for service and the decrease in the, the callbacks. So, you know, to, to reduce a shift down to just three is not really, we, we can't do that, really, we can't do that. We need to be operating at four, and if we can, you know, work and manipulate or look at the revenue that we're bringing in, you know, and maybe bring a little more over to cover that, that cost. But I do know that, you know, having a, a person that's out of play, that affects more than just that one shift, because now I've got one person or one member that is no longer in play to, to fill those callbacks, or to fill details or any of that, because I don't have that employee. So, it's going to have a snowballing effect that will negatively affect our operations, and, you know, not to make it sound dramatic, but in the case of, you know, days where you have, we just had a three-man transport that required three paramedics to attend to a patient, if I'm on that three-man shift, that leaves zero coverage in town.
Chief, I have a question, may I ask this question? You mentioned, I want to go back to something you said. You said you're going to bring in about 100,000 more in revenue this year?
Yes. Right now, we are at 744,000 for billed revenue, and we still have through July, or through June 30th, and just based on the average we've taken in this year, so we stand to, so that's being conservative, saying it's only going to be 100. It could be up to 250.
This may be an old number, but I'm only looking at a 25%, 25,000 increase in revenue between last year and this year.
Yeah, this year's not over. Well, it, the current, the current fiscal year, the way our billing cycle works, it goes by fiscal year, so, we have five months still in play of revenue that haven't, that we haven't processed.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, you know, the, the expense component is, is nothing more than an issue of a revenue component. I mean, they're, take whichever side you want. So, is, is that what we're showing, Todd, for, on our revenue? I mean, I'm looking at this, this says 500,000.
Yes. That's where, so, when we talked about this last year, and Todd chime in, you know, we look at a, our philosophy is to look at a four-year average, a three-year average...
Right, I understand that, yeah.
And so, that average is around that amount. I think, as Chief said, there is still some additional revenue, some months here. I mean, we try to be conservative on that. Todd, chime in and go a little further.
We could always look at it again, however, that's one component for the budget, but also included ambulance receipts is the money that's used for the debt to pay off the ambulance.
I know, I know that, yeah.
So, those money's are there.
But, but not proportionately to 100,000. I'm just saying, if, if we've got that kind of increase, and you're saying it's not even over, we're, we've still got a few months to go.
You had 100,000.
I'm looking for money anywhere I can find it without putting ourselves into a deficit situation.
So are we.
Can we look at that?
Yep.
Because that might solve at least your problem. You know, I mean, it's a $60,000 issue.
And just by looking at that, what we're saying is make less conservative of, estimated of what we're, because I think what I hear that...
We hear you.
Okay. I'm just clarifying.
We, our local receipts, we raise up by more than 5.5%. There's some, and I know...
I'm not asking you to, to, you know, make it up.
I know you're not.
But I do want to, you know, this is a year where we need to reflect as close as we can. I mean, if, if we don't come in with 3 million of free cash next year, it's okay.
We hear you.
You know where I'm going with that.
I know where you're going, I hear you.
Yeah, I think that's just where we stand. I think for us, like, for, for the fire department, I don't have as many layers as the police department, so I don't really have anywhere to go. I don't, I actually don't have anywhere to go where I can save. I don't have a .5 here, a .5, I've already frozen my admin assistant, my deputy, and are drowning trying to handle all of that.
No, I'm looking at revenue, I'm not looking at expense sheet.
Well, you know, I have nowhere to go from the term, in terms of, you know, the depth of my department. We are operating transparently thin as we operate, and we're okay to do that, like, we're willing to accept that, knowing the challenges we face, but cutting a shift by one person would be extremely detrimental to the services that we provide and that, you know, the services the town has grown accustomed to us providing.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Any question, I apologize, any questions?
No, he mentioned something about delaying the purchase of the ambulance a year. Would that, what different, what would that make?
Well, in terms of...
That's a different ambulance.
Yeah. Different ambulance, not the one we already are getting. I'm talking about, like, you know, we can't...
Talking about number two, number two.
So, our, our two ambulances right now are, the ones that we're currently running are very tired. So, technically, I'm supposed to ask for another one by schedule next year. Actually, this coming year in capital, I should be asking for another one, because it's 10 years old. It's a 2016, it's got 140-some-odd thousand miles, so, I should be asking for one, and what I'm saying is I'm not going to be asking for one, knowing the situation we're in.
Could I make, could I ask a question? Now, the ambulance itself, the motor, the transmission, the rear end, that all wears out.
Yes.
Generally, the body doesn't wear out. Can you take the body from an ambulance and put it onto a new one?
Yes, you can do a remount. Unfortunately, our ambulances have been way late, about five times since I've been here, so the bodies are held together with Bondo and been reconstructed a few times. So, no, we're not going to remount the bodies we have, because they probably won't take a remount. Now, if we had one that hadn't been hit three or four times, yeah, but ours, unfortunately, people have hit us.
Who has?
And hit us hard. So like A1, the, A2, the one that's supposed to be primary service is, is held together by Bondo and glue and duct tape at this point. And then A1 is the older of the two. It's also been involved in accidents. So those are not candidates for remount, unfortunately. You know, if we could, I certainly would entertain that. But they're, they're not, they're not in the shape to be remounted.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I think those are small presentations, shows you how difficult our sort of budget-
Every little bit helps.
Every little bit helps, you know. We had discussions with department where, you know, $200 line difference in expenses was, you know, it's, it's needed and it's necessary. That just poses the, the challenges we face with budgeting and, you know, none of these are easy decisions. And one thing that I told departments, I tell the, the select board, I want every department to have the opportunity to speak to the board about what impact it may have for the communities. It's important for the community to know, it's for the board to know, but also give department has the opportunity to speak to them as well. These are not easy decisions, so that's my philosophy.
So, Todd, on the revenue side, and I know you go through this in nauseous detail. By the way, I hope you feel better. Everybody I know has been, it's tough. It's been a terrible year for that. You're gonna, before our next meeting on the 18th, I believe, you're gonna revisit these to whatever degree you can with Justin. And so we'll get some type of update, one way or the other.
Yes.
Are there any other? Well, I'll, let me, I'll talk offline with Justin on it. This isn't, yeah, okay. I just had some thoughts, but I, they're just crazy thoughts that float in and out every now and then. Okay. Any other questions?
No. Your thoughts or departments you would want to hear from at your next board meeting?
If, could hear from other departments, let, let them know, let, can hear from them and hear why we can't make a cut in that department. That's what we seem to be hearing.
Well, you're not recommending any, any other, I mean, council on aging, I know that 10,000 is coming from their, what I would call stabilization, in their words. Body cams pretty much off the table. You're gonna have to talk to us about the assistant town administrator, re-chair discussion.
Correct.
Facilities director is something we need to talk about in more depth.
Yep.
That, that's, to me, a position has to be filled.
I would say that, and our superintendent would say that, but you know, obviously it's the select board budget and the town decision. I mean, yeah. I'll discuss that at your next board meeting.
Okay. All right. Anything else tonight?
No.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd. Hope you feel better.
Thank you. Lots of liquids.
Yep. One, one thing that I do want to make sure we're clear before Todd goes in, is the board aligned with the thinking in terms of how to approach the tri-county debt? No debt exclusion for May, let's look at utilizing stabilization funds to fund that for this year. Obviously, town meeting has to support that with a two-thirds vote. If they don't, then we have to obviously double back on that and fund it via free cash or something because we won't be able to. I want to make sure that's the direction from the board. That that's the way we're gonna go.
Yeah, I believe that's-
Nita?
Yeah, that sounds-
You have an unanimous opinion.
All right. We know, we know. And we agree. So, okay. Thank you. Well, next items, general updates. I just have two items.
Just apologize. Just one que, well, Todd's right, now you can answer it. No, no, I'm sure you can answer it. Does that number reflect the 10 increase?
Reflects the what?
Does that number, Todd, does that number reflect the 10 additional students?
Yes. In the budget, in the summary sheet? Yes.
Does, okay. Thank you.
Yep. The only figure it does include is the school building portion.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions budget-wise?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, all right. Come later. Just two quick-
See you tomorrow.
Yeah. Just two quick updates. I'm typically, you know, I always say, you know, I want to thank my department heads for the collaboration on the budget. We're still doing that work. It was a lot of hard work. So I do want to just say that because I didn't mention it at the opening of our conversation last, the last agenda item. Also want to just say quickly appreciation for my team. My, my team is out. We've got sick vacation, but I do want to thank Rich, Betsy, and a variety of departments who were willing to help, help me, help us run this meeting tonight. So I just want to publicly say thank you for that. I appreciate that work. And then a bit of good news. I got information today. We, we've been trying to get some green communities grant funds for a couple of projects in town. So today I got some good news. I know I spoke with the board that we were waiting on the state. So we're getting 172,500 for green communities to do, to repair our solar array on our school system. That's gonna allow us to repair that system and realize some savings regarding that.
DPW.
Oh, and then we get 72,500 for a heat pump system that our facilities director has recommended for DPW. So opportunities to realize some savings on the operating side there. Excited to get that money. That's a decent nugget, so happy about that.
And I happened to, I was going through and calculating all of the grant funds that we've gotten in, in the last nine months, and I want to compliment you. I think it's the most we've ever gotten.
Thank you. I will, I'm gonna compliment our team.
I know, it's a collective effort. I, I know that.
No, I appreciate that, Jim. And I, I think we've been very aggressive.
You have set a record for us.
And we're trying to be as aggressive as possible. We're trying to help our residents and do the best that we can. So thank you for that acknowledgement. I'll let the team know. And that's it for my updates.
About the board, Kevin? Comments, questions, updates, news, happy things, birthdays, good wishes?
I didn't hear any happy things this evening.
Well, we're still open. This is not an unusual problem. It's, it's a, an annual event. I can't remember a budget ever that didn't have a deficit. Nita?
I just have a couple of things. I attended my first, I'm on the Massachusetts State Select Board and I attended my first meeting of that. And I think there will be opportunities to advocate for Norfolk. Certainly a lot of learning opportunities for me. And so that is, I took seven pages of notes, like, woo! Also, I'm excited that the governor is proposing an increase in chapter 90 monies that probably won't affect us this budget cycle, but that could be a benefit for our town. I'm interested in talking to the board about adding in office hours. I know when we've done that in the past, people don't come. And so I, I recognize only one time did I have office hours. Some people actually were coming, but I, I think that in this, what I'm hearing from people in the community is people are feeling unsettled, they have questions. And so I'm interested in having, if we even just had generic select board office hours and whichever one of us could be there, I think that that would be an opportunity to be more available to residents with their questions. You can see on Facebook that there is so much misinformation. There's good information too. There's a lot of misinformation there. I'd like people to have as many opportunities as possible to get questions answered. So we can talk about that through Justin offline, but I just wanted to put that out there. Also, one of the things that the governor talked about, or maybe it was the lieutenant governor at the conference we attended, was the, like, we have green communities, we have, now we're going to be Tree City USA, which I'm very excited about. But there's also age-friendly communities. And how do we think about, and I know from meeting with Karen Edwards, that there's actually criteria for age-friendly cities and age-friendly towns. And, but I've started to have, one of the, the select board goals is trying to find opportunities to build our, the strength of our community. And so I've attended a couple of meetings, Norfolk Strong and Norfolk Senior Strong, and talked, especially with the senior group and with, also with Karen Edwards, talking about, in Norfolk, what does that mean? What do our seniors, what are they excited about that we're offering for our seniors? And what are, what are, what do they see as opportunities for them, understanding that we, our belts are tight? And so it's not that we can magically do a lot of things, but I think in terms of having an opportunity to advocate at the state level, if I know specifically the needs of Norfolk that aren't coming from me but are coming from our community. So I've been asking questions of those organizations about what does, what, what would that mean if Norfolk was designated as an age-friendly city? And, and that is work toward that goal. And that's all that I have.
Well, when I reach my senior age, I will certainly look forward to it being an age-
Awesome.
Why are we laughing? I guess, thanks, Rich. So, all right, I'm all are qualified. I don't really have any updates other than just a little bit on the, we had our weekly meeting with the state. No real significant changes. We've still been very fortunate to not have any public safety issues associated with it. The number of children entering our schools has leveled. In fact, KP is down two now. And I believe there were seven that were slated to leave Norfolk. Doesn't mean there might be more arrivals, but at this point, it appears to have stabilized and, and actually decreasing. One of the comments I asked and got a very interesting answer was, I said, if they noticed any changes with some of the federal efforts that are going on with, and that is not a political statement on my part. And the response was very interesting. They have seen, and the word used was significant drop in folks arriving. I put no meaning other than to share what was said. But we continue to work collaboratively. I will tell you that I think Homert Bound has done an outstanding job in maintaining that facility and working with us.
Heading home.
And we are still, excuse me, Homer, thank you.
Heading home.
Heading home. Homert Bound, well, it's close enough.
Well, it's very close, actually.
But they are, and again, we ask the question every time, June 27th is the magic date. And as of the last conversation, that is still the case. But we should know as we get nearer because that isn't gonna be an overnight shutdown. That's gonna take some time and some planning, has been the case in Cambridge and other locations where this has occurred. So I would say we'll have a firm feeling on that in the very near future. Did I miss anything, sir? No.
Oh, may I jump in on something that you just made me think of?
Sure.
Obviously, the, the, the community voted not to fund the beginning of the process for adding on to the schools, but, and, and we respect that. I think that it doesn't change the situation, that the schools are overcrowded and there's a real problem. And so we're gonna need to lean into that work and how do we support our schools because the schools are overcrowded? And the, the problem stays the same. It's just that the, the door to that solution that was proposed was closed by the community.